So it says you left.
Yeah, we don't both need to be on here.
That's fine.
Okay, we looks like we have a quorum Jim. One, two, do we have the four Jim? How's it look Jim?
Jim, you're on mute.
Yeah, Jim, you're muted.
I'm sorry, Rick, I only see three members here. I see myself, I see Sarah Harris, I see Ron Stelmac. If I'm misidentifying anybody else who's a member, let me know.
Holy crap, and I thought it was me. I sent another email out, Mr. Chairman, you know, yesterday.
No, I know, I saw, we were a little late to the party here, this is we were logging in and we're waiting for the host, so.
Yeah, my apologies on that.
Yeah, no, no, I got you, I got you, I but I don't see a fourth member of the board.
Mr. Maeney?
He's not present.
He said he can make it.
Yeah.
Does it, does anyone have his number? Because I do not.
I.
And that's, that's something I didn't take with me.
All right, hang on, hang on one second, I'll check, I'm not sure, but let me put myself on mute and I'll shuffle some papers.
Appreciate it.
I can hear nobody. I don't know if it's me.
I do not have my roster in front of me. It's, of course, it's probably not listed on the town's website, right?
There's an email on the email chain from yesterday, I can email him.
Hey, Bill Holsworth, can you hear me?
Roger, that.
You don't have Ben Maeney's number, do you?
No, sir, I do not, I do not have any of the commissioner's number.
Guess who helped me out with the password?
Ken Kellogg.
Yes, sir. Oh, did you go?
He, no, he texted me at the same time and then told me he texted you.
Yeah.
Problem averted, thank you all for joining.
Yeah, looks like we need another member, Jim, to avoid.
Yeah, no, I hear you, I just don't have a roster in front of me.
And Chris, thanks for calling.
Yeah, no worries, Rick. Actually, we just reached out to Bruno, who is Ben's brother, to see if Bruno will join. So just waiting to see if we can get him on the line here.
Oh, yeah, I have, I have Bruno's number, yeah. Did you call him, you said?
We texted him, we texted his brother.
Hi, everyone, I got ahold of Ben's brother, Bruno. His brother's in Florida, but he's calling him, because you can do Zoom anywhere. So he's going to ask him to join us in Florida.
All right, we'll give that a go, what about Spencer?
Yeah, he doesn't return any emails or take my phone call.
Oh, that's that good.
No, that's why we need another candidate.
We'll see, we'll see what's going on.
Everybody's in Florida now.
I wish I was, it's cold today.
You see, today's news, they say Florida is the number one state, came out ahead of everybody.
In what, in what category?
In the economy and less people got sick there than any of those states, California is the worst.
Certainly, real estate prices have gone crazy in Florida.
Oh, yeah.
The tri-state really influenced South Florida, I can tell you that.
And they'll go, they'll change everything as well, don't worry about it.
Bruno's gonna call me right back, he said.
All right, digging deep into the well now.
He's here, okay. Go ahead, Bruno.
He's eating dinner in Florida, he's gonna get on right now.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
Okay, we saved the meeting, thank you for everyone for hanging on.
Hey, I'm happy, the Mets won game one of the doubleheader, so I'm coasting into the nightcap.
Jim, they're in first place.
Yeah, they won, that's just what they needed, go into extra innings in game one.
Chris, you brought us good luck tonight.
Yeah, I guess so, I'm just glad we, that he's gonna get on here and we have enough for a meeting.
Yeah, Kent, the first selectman said the next legal's coming out of my pocket.
Rick, just so you know, the email bounced back from me, so I wonder if you're, if you're using Ben's correct email address.
Yeah, he had two, but he, he did acknowledge, after our first meeting, he would be available on the 19th.
Okay.
So obviously, he didn't consult with his wife. That's a joke.
That's, yeah. That's where he went wrong.
You know, because he's a CPA and, you know, he had to file by Monday.
Was it dinner, was he in the appetizer, was it dessert, waiting on the check?
He's doing the salad.
Hello? Hello?
Is that Ben?
Yeah, this is Ben.
Okay, we got a, we got a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let it rip, thanks, Ben, for above and beyond the call, let's, let's let it rip.
Sorry, I'm out of town, so I just called in, sorry about that.
That's all right, we'll make this work. But Ricky, do you need to do the call or the preamble, or do we want to jump right in?
Yeah, zoning board of appeals, special meeting, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing, April 19th, 2022. In accordance with Connecticut general statute 870, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 19th at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter, which it is, via fully remote Zoom meeting, concerning the following, ZBA 2022-02 File 1410-588 Pepper Street, application for variance of section 4.36 to permit a 15-foot side yard setback in lieu of the required minimum 25-foot for the purpose of construction of a warehouse office, 588 Pepper Street LLC, owner applicant solely engineering representative. ZBA 2022-03 File 1411-4 Eastern Road, application for front yard variance of section 4.1.4 at 4 Eastern Road to increase the bulk net floor area of the structure on the second floor by adding a 10 by 26, 260 square foot dormer, application for rear yard variance of section 8.2.3 J1 and 2 on Hattertown Road to create a drive-through entrance and lane, Clean Pro CT LLC owner applicant. And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to acknowledge that we did receive a withdrawal from a Mr. Joseph Branko, formally withdrawing my application for the variance requested at my home residence 64 Ripton Ridge Road, Monroe, Connecticut. Thank you for this attention, Joseph Branko. All set to proceed.
Jim, you're on mute.
Jim, you're on mute, unmute.
Thank you, Rick, I'm sorry, I should know this by now. All right, we'll begin with the file 2022-02-588 Pepper Street. Who is our presenter for that application?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Robert Pryor, professional engineer and land surveyor with Solely Engineering, here tonight to representing the applicant. Also with me this evening is Chris Pulaski from our office, who also worked on the plans, and I believe the property only, property owner, Arnie Jones, is also here. Should the board have any specific questions regarding the use of the building or things that the owner could answer? We're here tonight, as Rick has read, for a, what we consider a relatively modest side yard variance for the construction of a new warehouse. May I share my screen?
Please.
I got, it says that screens sharing is disabled.
I believe our host has to allow you to share the screen, there we go. Our host is screen sharing.
I have the sharing, Rob, it's not going on?
Let's see.
I don't see anything on our screen.
Yeah, I think there's a setting, there must be a setting somewhere, and unfortunately, I couldn't point you, I can't point you to it, because I.
On the bottom, on the bottom of the screen, there's a screen share tab. I don't know, Rick, if you're hosting, whether under, if you're under participants, if you right-click on, on Rob, you might be able to allow him to screen share.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did write, stop video chat. It says it's screen sharing right now.
Yeah, I think that's because it's yours, you're sharing your screen.
We're looking at your desktop and there's really nothing there for us to look at, there's like, the background is the town's webpage.
Stop, stop sharing.
To stop share.
Let me stop, all right.
I think under.
Yeah, you may be all go under participants.
Participants, if you right-click on Rob, you might be able to allow him to screen share as an, as an option.
What did I, did I mess it up again?
Well, we're seeing just the Monroe homepage as the screen share. If you have the, the file open on your desktop, it'll, it'll open to it, but but otherwise, you'd stop sharing, and you can't, you can't right-click on Rob and have him share. Under the participants list.
Okay, I got the participants.
If you, if you right-click, I think you can allow permissions.
All right, try that.
Rick, if you click the.
I allowed you to call host, try that one.
All right, yep, nope, there we, that was, that was it, perfect. Okay, hopefully, you're seeing it.
All right, here we are.
Site plan, huh, or the site.
Yes, we can.
So this is just the first slide, it's just an aerial of the aerial view of the site currently, it's currently developed with a existing industrial building, parking driveways, and site's about a little bit over three acres. And if you went, the aerial shows this area all wooded back in the rear portion of the site, if you visited the site today, you'd see that that area has been cleared and prepped as part of a previously approved parking lot that the planning and zoning approved for that area. I want to say sometime in, I think it may have been 2021 or 2020. So there's an approval in place for the owner to build a parking lot in this rear, rear area. And then, once we really started looking at it, the owner, you know, asked us to look at the potential of his ability to further develop that rear area with an industrial building and all the associated improvements that go with that. So what we came up with and what the site plan that that we're asking for is the construction of a 16,000 square foot industrial building in that rear area, stormwater detention basin, septic system, additional parking areas and outdoors, outside storage area. Part of the rea, the reason that we're really asking for the variance is that when we sort of put everything together back here, the geometry of the property really forces us to kind of push the building up into this corner of the site. And in order to get adequate circulation around the existing building, give us room for the existing, for the, the septic system and the separation distances we need for that. And again, just the geometry of the lot forces us to encroach by a small amount in this corner of the building, and that's really the area that we're looking for, the variance from the 25-foot required setback to the 15-foot setback. When we look at that area, we, when we pull that area in a little closer. Get to the next. And this just zooms in on that little corner, this is really what we're looking at. So you can see the, the curved property line here. This is the, this is the required 25-foot setback. We're really looking for just a projection into that setback for this little corner of that, the building that is shown in red here. Again, we think it's, it's relatively modest, this is just over, I think it's about 120 square feet of building that actually projects into the setback. So again, we feel that that's pretty, a pretty modest request. The, we have spoken, you know, to both of the neighbors on that side of the property. And certainly, they may be here tonight, that, and they may have comments. I think we have a letter of support in the file from one of the neighbors. And, you know, the other neighbor did ask us to do some, some additional screen, screening or landscape screening along that property line that we've agreed to. But certainly, they may be here and they may have other comments, but we felt that we had worked out any issues with, with both the neighbors that would be affected by this variance. I think with that, I think I'm going to keep it short since we're, we're, we're running a little late tonight anyway, and if you have any questions, you know, our, our team is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, Rob, if you could stop screen sharing so I can see the rest of the members. Do, do any of the members have a question with regard to this application? Just raise your hand or use the raise hand feature on the bottom. I don't see anybody, Ben, I can't see you, you're on the phone, do you have any questions or you're good?
Both neighbors, I guess the both neighbors have been accommodated, from what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Are they on this call, do we have a letter from them?
We'll find out in a second, this is, are there, if, if we're done with questions, my next is going to see if there's any member of the public that wishes to be heard here. So with that, is there anybody on this meeting that would like to be heard? If so, just identify yourself and ask any questions you might have. Going once, going twice, last call for public comment. Seeing none, unless there's any other questions, last call for board questions, otherwise, I don't see any reason for any kind of rebuttal, Mr. Pryor, we'll, Ron has a question, go ahead, Ron. You're, you're on mute, Ron. You, Ron, I'm sorry, you're muted.
How's that?
That's good, good.
Oh, good, okay, just following, just following through on the question about the letter from the second neighbor regarding accommodating a screen of trees or something of the sort, do we have anything on record for that?
I don't believe we do, I don't believe we do, Chris, do you have, do you have anything you can add to that?
Yeah, so we met them out probably a little less than a month ago on site and kind of walked the site and talked over with them. And we basically agreed to plant 10 trees or evergreens, if you will, along the border, I have that in writing, I could submit that for record, or email it over to Rick, but yeah, they were okay with the application as long as we planted 10 trees along the property border there. So, and then we do have the, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jim, went for the record, who's, which, which neighbor is this impacting, is this between the street in the building that they want this landscaping, or between the building and another property lot?
Between the private drive and the street, or in the building, excuse me.
Okay.
So that's actually a private drive back there, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chairman, I do have a letter in the file.
Yeah, so I think the, yeah, I think the, the person who asked for the screening is 594 Pepper Street, Chris, is that right?
I believe so, that would, that sounds correct.
So that's the, that's sort of an interior lot that has the private drive along the side yard of our property, so that's really the only, that's really the only a butter on that side. You know, in the strictest sense of the word, that's the only a butter. And, you know, we're certainly agreeable to something on the variance that, that specifies that we'll plant the trees. We've already agreed to it.
You said it was 594 Pepper Street?
It's 594 and 600, I believe.
Okay.
It's the diploma frames, Churchill Classics.
I'm sorry, Chris, are you with the town?
Sorry, yeah, for the record, my name is Chris Pulaski, I'm a civil engineer with Solely Engineering on behalf of the applicant here.
Thank you.
No worries.
Any other questions for members of the board?
I have one, Rick, is it, is it normal process for you to notify the neighbors of this meeting?
Yes, the budding neighbors. Only, yeah.
Understood, thank you.
Anything else? Last call, I didn't see any call for public comments, so I will close this file and move on to file number 1411-4 Eastern Road. Who's, in, in, Rob, since you are still co-hosting, please don't leave the meeting or you'll shut us down, so. So I'll open a file for 4 Eastern Road, who is present to, to present this application.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, my name is Nick Shilal, I'm the owner of the property and the owner of Clean Pro LLC.
Okay. You may introduce your proposal and.
If we can do some sharing as well, I want to show you the aerial, or show you kind of things and then go from there.
Yeah, I, I removed Rob, I am making Nick co-host.
Okay.
Let me kiss, excuse me. Okay. Where is this? Just be patient, I'm not good with the. So we bought this property December 27th, and we've been working on putting the displays together, it's been like this for a long time, every time we drive, we see it. And my wife say, who's gonna, who's the dummy gonna buy that building? Little, she knows it's me. Okay, where is this? Can you see my screen, gentlemen?
We can see, yeah, we can see the. We can see. Yeah, we can see the rendering.
Okay, that's true. So basically, we take in this property here. This is for Eastern Road, nine hundred ten over here. The first one we take in on the left side of Eastern Road. And we're gonna go on second floor. Second floor has six foot height. And he's not the the gentleman who had the day before there was an apartment, it was a full kitchen, it was a shower, was a full apartment, but was illegal apartment was not authorized. So what we want to do, we want to bump up the roof to make a seven eight to use it as a an office space. In order to gain that, we have to bump up this space here and come up eight feet by twenty five feet. Trying to get you a picture. So we take in this space over here.
You know, I'm I'm sorry, it's Mr. Chalal, how do you pronounce your last name? Is it is it Chalal?
Yeah, Healan without the J.
Oh, hello. I'm sorry. The the only thing I can see on the screen is the artist rendering of the finished product. I don't know if you are looking at something different on your screen.
Okay. So the foot, the floor is the same. Basically, we take in the second, the second floor and we jog it over here. On the left side, you see this left side here?
The dormer that's above the
The dormer. So basically, we take in exactly what's there. We're just going up. We're not increasing any space in the first floor. The first floor is existing. The second floor, we add in a dormer, which is eight feet by twenty five feet to gain the height we need for the dormer.
And what's the intended use of that second floor?
An office.
An office for the bagel and coffee shop or a separate tenant?
It's an office for me. I'm going to use as an office.
For is a separate business? What is what is the nature of your office?
I'm a I'm a builder, a construction remediation, and we're going to use this as an office.
So it's not related to the proposed bagel and coffee shop?
No, the bagel would be only in the first floor.
Do you have? I I have the site plan in front of me, but are you able to screen share that?
Of it as we can. Let's see. I believe this is site plan. Can you see it?
No, I'm all I'm looking at is still the is the rendering.
Okay, let's see this.
Perhaps you're showing
Are you sure? Are you able to see the site plan?
No, I know unless I I'm we can only still see just the the rendering.
You're it's like you're showing the rendering document. You're not showing your entire screen. So when you go to a different image, we're not seeing that. So you need you probably want to share your whole screen.
Ah, hold on, let me see. I'm gonna do this. We don't want this. Okay, let's see. I'm not sure how to do this.
All right. Well, while while we're looking at this screen, there's the second building there. What what is what is the second building proposed to be occupied for?
Uh, this is just a tool shed. That's a pre-existing that building been there for God knows how long. There's a flower shop. I think they used to sell vegetables for a shop. We're just keeping it. We're just trying to enhance the outside. I'm going to put my tools in it.
Basically, with all with all of those windows, that's going to be a tool shed?
Yeah. Well, we just put it on with the windows, but it can be screen shed for sun. It's about five hundred square foot.
Okay. Well, while it's not shown on the screen, I I I'm looking at the site plan sheet, page one of one that was supplied to us. And I really have some severe reservations about the ability for this to be a drive-through with the proposed entry into this drive-through right at the intersection of Hattertown Road being parallel with the road with the utility pole that's there in what appears to me to be very, very limited stacking for customers to be able to pull in in order. I I just don't understand how the drive-through could possibly work.
So then on this plan, in terms of the 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 pole, we're going to ask the utility to move the pole back to the toward the Eastern Road and Hattertown Road. We already spoke to them. They can move it. We have to pay for it. They'll move the then if you look at we need to render another hot So we are able to put six cars all the way in.
Yeah, but but I I don't understand on this drawing where where the point of ordering is and where someone would pick up their order. And so the sheer entrance into this drive-through at this Y intersection seems to me to be extraordinarily unsafe.
So right now, if you look at the pre-existing window, the wind, there's a window that's pre-existing. It's eight feet out. We're gonna cut it, bring it back four feet to we're gonna tuck it in close to the the building four feet. And you're gonna have, right now, we have sixteen feet from the edge of the building to Hattertown. And by us bringing it four feet, we're gonna have a separation. We have two cars moving in there. We already and you can see on the rights, on the left side toward the building, we have one, two, three cars to order. And in the corner of the building, you can pick up the order all the way in. I don't know how to show you this this site. I'm I'm kind of frustrated how to show you the the render.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the site plan. I just I just don't see that as enough physical stacking space.
Okay.
Plus, the entry into that drive-through lane right at the Y of that intersection, I just see that as a potential safety problem. And I I just don't see how cars are going to be able to stack and circulate safely there. So I I have severe reservations about your ability to do a drive-through. I love the idea of reinvestment of into this property, but I think trying to do my my initial impression here is you're trying to put ten pounds of sugar in a five pound sack here.
Well, explain to them just a question so I can understand. What do you mean circulating? There's no circuit. We're going straight out. There's no circulating. We're going straight out to Eastern Road.
Right, but I just don't see the ability for cars to safely enter the drive-through lane order and stack. And if you've got several cars in the queue, you're backing up into Hattertown Road. It's just as this to me is a recipe for disaster.
So we have six cars there. I don't know how many cars. What's the requirement and what do we need? That's why.
I just I don't see how you can demonstrate that there's six cars queuing. I'm looking at the site plan and just entering just just where the curb cut. I just don't understand how a curb cut driveway entrance can be proposed so proximate to that Y intersection with Hattertown Road. I think it's going to be extremely confusing.
Well, when when
to people taking that right onto Hattertown and suddenly there's a there's a curb cut there with an entry to a drive-through. I just think that's that's just not going to work.
Mr. Hello?
Yes, yes, sir.
This is Ron Stoneman. I've did it. I have visited that site twice just to get a good feel for it. Where you're planning to put that driveway, you I believe earlier in this meeting said there was twelve feet plus four feet between the structure and the road.
Yeah.
I I did not take a tape measure out, but that I have a hard time envisioning that there was sixteen feet in that area. And then you indicate that there is a fence to be installed or existing, a wooden guardrail. Guardrail. It I don't recall seeing that there. Is it there already?
No, no, we have to install. We gotta do a barricade to separate between Hattertown and drive-through.
Right. And and when you put that in, I I believe it's going to make it very tight on that lane.
Well, we went there, we measured it. I mean, it's I'm not computably inclined, so I'm trying to show you, but there's I don't know how to.
The pickup point would be where you indicate there's an addition on the building?
Yes, sir. You gotta be in the the back corner.
Question for Rick, with all respect to the members. Wouldn't questions about parking spaces and and egress and all that be decided by planning and zoning after a variance is heard? Is that within? Are these questions for the ZBA to answer?
Let me let me first start with what the regulation says, and then I'm going to give you the history of why the applicant inserted this request at the eleventh hour. Okay? For restaurants, which a bagel and coffee shop would fall under, you need eight spaces of queuing with a minimum of four spaces before the ordering speaker. This application was precipitated first and foremost for the second floor addition to square off for his future office. We just had a staff meeting and he was bringing up the idea of a drive-through lane. And there wasn't a lot of discussion that went into it. But he thought it made sense to apply for the variance that was needed now. He was told that your board may want to separate the two because clearly you're having a lot of issues like we did. There's a lot of planning issues that have to go into the drive-through. So, Mr. Chairman, I suggest that you ask the applicant if the board is struggling with it, that he may want to pull back on the drive-through section of his application. So first and foremost, it was the second floor addition that precipitated this application. And then the applicant says, well, I gotta go before the board. Let's see what they say with the drive-through. So if you're struggling with it, I think that's one of the answers you can you can go with.
Well, I I had I just have a question. The way I'm reading the call here is we've got a variance for total floor area by adding that ten by twenty six dormer and then a rear yard variance on Hattertown Road to create the drive-through. So so is is there a setback variance that's required for the dormer addition?
Yes, that's the street line setback because the building predates zoning.
Okay.
It doesn't respect that. So once again, Mr. Chairman, to simplify what's going on, you need to separate the two portions of the application. The application first and foremost was precipitated by the second floor. It then grew into the drive-through. A lot of thought has to go into the drive-through.
Yeah, but but the second, there's there's two pieces that the bulk and net floor then. So the application for a rear yard variance on Hattertown Road to create a drive-through entrance in lane. Is that so that is is the drive-through lane require a setback variance in and of itself?
Yes, it does. Right. So that's separate.
Okay. The street line is Dormer addition is a setback. And and can I ask, Rick, what what the parking requirement is? I only see eight parking spaces here. And we're talking about a bagel and coffee shop. I don't know what the square footage of that is.
Yeah, this this property is unique as it's pre-existing non-conforming. When he goes before the commission for the for the bagel shop, they will have to make a conscientious decision if it is substantially the same as the pre-existing use that was in the building before. If they if they say no, then he's got to make adjustments for more parking. There are two parcels that he owns for this, you know, geographic area.
Yeah.
So he does have the ability to adjust the property line or to combine the property. Because, as you know, we can't allow a parcel to become more non-conforming.
No, I understand that. My my concern, though, is we've got, I I don't know what the parking standard is. I know the the super duper weenie was in here for a period of time. They occupied the first floor. We're talking about adding a contractor's business now to the second floor as a separate business entity with use of that storage building. My concern is adding another business here to the bagel shop would increase the demand for parking beyond the eight spaces that are there.
But the issue tonight, Mr. Chairman, is not the uses per se. He is telling you, this is what I want to present to the planning and zoning. But he he wants to square off the second floor, even if it's even if it's used for storage. And you can impose that restriction too, if you deem so fit. So this is a very preliminary application that the Planning and Zoning Commission hasn't even discussed, even at a subcommittee level.
I understand that, but I I'm just I I'm in my in my respectfully, I I believe this application is premature. I I don't know what what I've heard from this applicant is is there's a second business proposed on the premises. I don't know what the net floor area is for the bagel shop and what the parking requirement is for that. I I don't want to discourage this applicant. I'd love to see reinvestment into this property and to make it look nice as he's showing in here. So I have I have some grave concerns about the the total number of parking spaces. And I certainly am completely uncomfortable with the drive-through as it's designed here.
Okay, so can we focus on the first part of the application? We leave the drive-through as a second. We'll deal with it on a later time?
I I guess I I just what's what's the square footage of the bagel shop?
Eleven hundred square foot.
Eleven hundred.
Okay.
And and how many employees do you anticipate in the contractor's office?
I have only one person with me. Nobody comes to my I have an office in Orange. Nobody comes there.
I I just I I just don't feel like I have enough information to comfortably vote on anything here. I I I like the way this building looks on on the rendering. But I, you know, eight parking spaces, two of which are handicap spaces for hopefully successful bagel and coffee shop. I'm not sure is is
So what what do you recommend, Mr. Chairman, so we can we can we can figure out what to do? Because the building is we're holding it with the toothpick right now for the last four months. What what would you like me to do? So it can it can satisfy your your curiosity?
Well, I I I'm again, I'm concerned about what the overall occupancy of this building is and whether or not that in and of itself might
But we don't
for parking. I guess this is this is really a question, I think, for Mr. Schultz is whether or not it's been determined whether or not the eight spaces is adequate or whether there needs to be some also request for relief for parking here.
But we we have, we have, it's a coffee shop. Most people go in and out. If you go to Starbucks, they have the worst driveway with no parking lot, less parking lots. And I go there. People and and we we do go there regularly. So this is eight spots, people in and out. The bagel. If you go to Bagel Shop, same Bagel Shop on sport on Old Straffield Road in Fairfield, he has two parking spots. And I know if you're familiar with Fairfield, two parking spots he has, people in and out. I have more space, more leverage, more room for people to move. Same guy is coming to Monroe. Unless we bring super duper Winnie back there, maybe that will accomplish something.
Well, again, the 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 Straffield Road Bagel Shop is in a strip center that has more than eight parking spaces.
Do you have six parking space? I know Mione. I know I know Fairfield. I'm a Fairfield guy. I'm Black Hawk Chompacant property.
Well, again, that's not particularly relevant to this application. I just don't feel like I've got I I'm other other members may disagree. I just I just don't know that I've got the whole picture here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
All right. Once again, to simplify this application, the applicant is saying, I will remove the to simplify this application, the applicant is saying, I will remove the drive-through. Cause that in itself requires a whole meeting and it really requires the subcommittee of the zoning commission, which that has not taken place. Uh, I, I know the applicant went to District Three, but that's, that's a, a side issue nevertheless. So tonight, he wants to, uh, focus on the second floor expansion. Now, this commission can meet in two weeks. So if you, if you want more answers, if you want more, uh, answers provided, we could continue the meeting to the first Tuesday in May and have all of that information. So I, I, I think, uh, what you should do, Mr. Chairman, is to take a consensus of the members tonight, all four of you, to see what information you need from staff and the applicant and continue the hearing to the first Tuesday in, in, uh, May, unless you feel comfortable with the applicant answering your questions on the second floor issue.
Well, again, do we have, um, in your opinion, Rick, is what would the, the parking be required for the proposed coffee shop?
Yeah, that, that's something that I, once again, I, it's pre-existing, non-conforming, and I gotta get the consensus of the commission. As a matter of fact, I'm reporting on it this Thursday.
Okay.
Because I want them to go, I want the new members to go look at it. They have to make a judgment call. You know, because it's pre-existing, non-conforming. But I, I know, I know they will have difficulty with the drive-through.
Yeah, so look, forget the, all right, so if we take the drive-through off the table for, let's just assume the drive-through is not part of this application anymore. We're now talking about the commission having to determine whether they think the parking is adequate for the, um, coffee shop, or they're gonna make a determination whether they need to have more parking.
That is correct.
All right.
It's a judgment call by them.
Okay.
Well, this application is really early on, uh, in the beginning of discussion.
Okay.
So, you know, to, everyone's in support of fixing up the building. I mean, that, that's a no-brainer. But I think you do have questions that may not be able to be answered. And we will put them together because we're, we're meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
So.
I, I mean, I.
That's a consensus, I think.
I mean, I, that, that, that sounds like a, I, I would be favorable to continuing it for that purpose, but I'll ask the other members, Ron and Sarah and Ben, what, if you have any comments about that?
I'm, I'm fine with the continuation. Uh, I do have a question on the lot line. The documents provided with the application indicate that the lot line will be moved from its present position to a proposed new position. And what is the purpose of that?
This, this, this property is very small. It's point two nine. We're trying to take from the backspace to give more space to this property, to, to add. Otherwise, there's no parking.
Okay, so we have, we have two non-conforming lots and you want to realign the boundaries of the two non-conforming lots. Have you, have you considered perhaps, um, combining the two into a single lot, giving you more room to lay out your business?
We, uh, it's not my business. It's, it's a coffee shop and we want to build it to the coffee shop, not my business.
Okay.
But that, Mr. Chairman, that's another issue that the Planning and Zoning Commission have to talk about. They would be inclined to want to combine the two parcels. And what you can't do is to make a non-conforming parcel more non-conforming.
Okay, it would be my recommendation then, is, is, and I want to make this clear, uh, Mr. Halal, I, I, I do support the idea of renovating this property to make it look more aesthetically pleasing and occupiable. So I, that's, I, I, I'm not trying to thwart that.
No, I, I just don't, I know that, I know that Mr. Went.
I just don't want to take an action tonight that, that we'll have to revisit because if, if, if there's gonna be a realignment of the parking or a request for relief of parking, that needs to be, I think we need the answer to that question. Um, so I, I, I support where you're trying to go. I, I do have grave reservations, I will say, about this proposed drive-through on this site.
So we take in the drive-through, Mr. Chairman. Let's, let's focus only going, we're not adding any square foot in the building. We're just going up. Forget about the, the drive-through.
I got you.
How do we move forward? Because the building, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I would like to say that I think taking the drive-through out and understanding our role as the ZBA is to, is to look at the, the request for a variance to the front um, for the dormer and whether or not that variance, adding that dormer is reasonable. I see that as our role. And I see that as something that can be decided on, aside from the planning and zoning issues and the driveway issues that have yet to be, um, to be dealt with, I think, for the ease of the applicant, at least having one decision, whether or not the dormer is okay, could at least give some sort of, you know, let him know that we are, um, you know, we're trying to be a little less bureaucratic here and give at least one decision. So in my opinion, I'd be happy to go ahead, but, um, I probably am outnumbered on this one.
Mr. Chairman, just, just one.
Hang on a second, Mr. Halal. I, I do, um, Sarah, I do, um, agree with you in large measure. I, I do support the concept of, um, the, the dormer. But, um, with the additional business entity in there, my, I, I don't believe, uh, I'd like to get input from the commission as to whether they think the parking is adequate, because if it's not, then we might need to revisit that. Um, so I'm, I'm inclined to support the, the dormer, uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm not optimistic that eight parking spaces is gonna be adequate for the coffee shop plus a, a contractor's office. But I, I, I will respect the opinion of the commission if they think that that's adequate uh, and not an increase in the non-conformity. I would otherwise be supportive of the dormer.
Hey Jim, this is Ben. I have the same concerns about. Um, I'm, I'm all for improving the property, like we all said. The tool shed kinda piques my interest. A tool shed, construction business, which means trucks are going in there to pick up tools, drop off tools, parking situation. I'm not sure if you can have the second business. So certainly I think we should continue this for May until we get more answers.
Okay. Um, all right, I think having heard that and everybody's input, Rick, I think we're probably best putting this off till May. Um, we, I certainly don't want to thwart uh, reinvestment on this property. I think it may, if there's a little elbow room to get some additional parking there, I would, I would welcome that opportunity. But I, I think it, if there's gonna be a meeting next week, Rick, with some additional input, I think we'd, we'd have a little bit clearer picture at our May meeting. So I'm gonna respectfully suggest that we hold this meeting over.
Okay, I, I, I heard the board loud and clear. And I'll get that information. So we can have the information for a clear path for the applicant. Because everyone is in support of, of squaring off the second floor.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I just, uh, in general, so I think I'm, I'm tentatively supporting that aspect of the application. All right, so we will continue, uh, file eleven, I'm sorry, fourteen eleven until the May meeting, and that will close our public hearing portion of this particular meeting. Um, the only thing remaining, since that application is going to be held over for a couple of weeks, um, is potential deliberation on the five eighty-eight Pepper Street application. Does anybody have any or a motion to, uh, with respect to the Pepper Street Warehouse setback application?
This is Ben. Um, I motion to approve under the premise that the neighbors have been notified and accommodated with the, um, variance.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
That's, thank you, Sarah. I, I agree. I support that application. I think, Rick, would it be unreasonable to condition the, uh, the approval on the, the landscaping as proposed by the applicant?
Oh, absolutely. That's reasonable.
Okay. So Ben, uh, made the, do you just support that condition?
Yes, correct.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. Ron, do you have any issues or questions on that?
No, I'm fine with it.
All right, I'll call for a, a, a vote on the motion to approve of the conditions. Raise your hand or say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Ben.
All right, that, that is by my count of four to zero, uh, approval with conditions of that application.
Thank you.
And we will get a little bit more information on the Eastern Road application and hear that in a couple of weeks. Uh, I thank everybody for their patience and tuning in and, uh, we'll see in a couple of weeks.
And everyone, that's May third.
May the third. All right, thank you, Rick. We can stand adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.